Hello, Mr. Chair.
Hello, Mr. Kermoyan. How are you?
Doing, doing fine. Thank you. How are you?
Good, good. I've been, I've been working for four months back in work, so finishing up in another two weeks.
In terms of retiring?
Yeah.
Ah, wow, that's a, it's a life-changing moment, isn't it?
Well, I, I was retired, so I'm re-retiring.
All right, so you've been through this.
A couple of years even, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Well, what's crazy, yeah, interesting to be in the work thing, but.
Well, you just gotta keep, gotta keep active. I think that's the secret to life.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, planning, you know, actually, I wouldn't apply for the planning commission if I was, I couldn't do it. I was still. I, I start up at 4:30. I get the early.
Yeah, I'm an early riser, too. I'm gonna check out here for a bit until we get started. I'll be right back.
Hey, evening, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. We are just waiting for our crew here. Is there a start meeting today, Stuart?
Yes, there was.
Okay. It's good. I think you guys are sloughing off over there.
Naz is there, yeah. This is Daniel.
So, Mr. Chair, before we get started tonight, I know we're still waiting on another planning commission. If we could just remind the, the attendees to mute themselves, and then when it's their time to speak, then they can unmute.
Yeah, folks, if you could mute yourselves before it's time to speak, that would make it a little bit easier, please.
Okay, and how do we do that?
So, on your screen, if you move.
Okay, I got you.
You'll see a mute microphone in the corner somewhere, I think.
Yeah, he, he just did it.
Take it on. Well, we do technically have a quorum, but let's wait a little bit. I think we'll get a few more commissioners here.
Mr. Chair, I believe Commissioner Ostrowski may be absent. We haven't heard from her.
Okay.
So, we have our fifth.
Hi, I was trying to use a different Zoom client, but it made me join as a, as an attendee, not a panelist, and nobody noticed my Q and A, so if I drop off like I have been, that's why.
We were just taking bets on how many times you drop out, so.
Other clients, if people could keep an eye on it and come up with a panelist, they just can't paste the link in. Why this is happening, by the way, is that my regular work laptop, by, by policy, I can't put Zoom on it, so I have a Chromebook here, and apparently using the Chrome app is really dicey. I can install Android apps on it, which are not.
Your volume's a little low, Adam. I don't know if it's you or me, but it's a little hard to hear you.
Adam, did you say you were in IT?
Oh, yes. Still gets stuck. You're just farther from help.
So, do you use Teams out of interest instead of Zoom?
Hangouts meet.
Oh, okay, yeah. Now, we, we have some customers who won't allow us to use Zoom, and we have to use Teams now. Concerns over security.
Let's get going, guys, because we're, we're five minutes in here. I think Commissioners Zisser probably will be joining us in a second. Maybe Commissioner Ostrowski, but she might be missing today. So, well, let's call the regular meeting of the Campbell Planning Commission for October 13th, 2022 order. And I gotta say that this regular planning commission meeting will be conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-29-20 issued by the governor. And Corinne, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Present.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Here.
Oh, I said Bookbinder already. Commissioner Cray?
Here.
Who am I missing here? I think.
Action.
Right in the front and center here. Sorry, bud.
Commissioner Covell's here as well, maybe.
I'm, I'm present. I am. I don't think I was called on.
Commissioner Covell.
Yes, present.
I think that's everybody.
Okay, thanks, Corinne. And has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes of our last meeting? And if there's no changes or.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 13th.
Of the last, last one, October 13th, you're right.
Okay, I'll second.
And do we just take a voice phone? All in favor?
I.
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 What, are you opposed or abstaining? Okay, so that passes 5-0, and. So, Director Kermoyan, do we have any communications or changes or modifications to the agenda?
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And this is the time of our meeting where anybody can speak on an item that's not on the agenda. I don't see anybody out there, but if anybody wants to speak on an item not on the agenda, this is the time. Going once, going twice, and that is called. So now we will move right into our first, first item. Okay, item number one is a public hearing, PLN 2020-61. A public hearing to consider the application of Daniel Warren for a site and architectural review permit to allow construction of a new approximately 4,446 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with an interior accessory dwelling unit on property located at 1351 Peggy Avenue. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under CEQA. Planning Commission's action is final unless it's appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days, and our planner is Naz Healy. Danz?
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. All right, so, as mentioned, item one is an application for a site and architectural review permit for 1351 Peggy Avenue. The project site is Zone R110 and is located on Peggy Avenue, which is between West Hacienda Avenue and Steinway Avenue, and this is located within the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. The proposal is for an approximately 4,446 square foot, two-story home with an interior ADU. And that results in a lot coverage of 32% and the floor area ratio of 52%, where the max is 35% and 45%, except to the extent necessary to allow an 800 square foot ADU. The materials include stucco and horizontal siding walls, composition roofing, and brick accents, and these are materials which are found throughout the Santa Moss neighborhood. So, this information was in the staff report, but I'll just go over it briefly, as we did receive some questions regarding the size of the overall structure. So, looking at the existing homes within 300 feet, the average home size is about 2,400 square feet. Looking at the nearby two-story homes, the proposed home size would be more in line with those, although the FAR would be higher in comparison based on the smaller lot, lot size compared to some of the other properties nearby. So, whether the size of the structure is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood is something that the commission may want to discuss. The commission could certainly direct changes to the size or the configuration. But because the proposal does not directly conflict with any standards, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a certain site and architectural review permit. Thank you.
Any questions for, for Naz?
To, just to make sure we're on the same page here, if, if the portion of the interior of this building that is designated as an ADU or just part of the home, this would be non-conforming.
That's correct. Well, it would, yes, it would not, it would be over the max floor area ratio.
Okay.
So, it couldn't be something that the planning commission could be considering.
Okay, thank you.
And Naz, I have a couple of questions, I guess, just along those same lines. So, if I read the report correctly, based on the rules and laws and the code that we have in now, with our ADUs, which we're, we're trying to encourage, I know, but it sounds like they could, the applicant could lower the ADU from, what, like, well, 823 to 800 square feet and build a bigger house, according to our code right now. They're just trying to make the ADU a little bit bigger and build the regular house a little smaller. Is that, I read that correctly?
And, I mean, they're, I believe they're at 42% if they, if you take out the square footage of the ADU, so. Theoretically, they could make it slightly larger than what they're proposing.
Okay, and then, you know, I like the, the chart. In terms of the second floor square footage on your chart, do we, is there any, are there any guidelines on the size of a second story in two-story homes as a percent? as a percentage of total square footage or just as a gross square footage or anything like that?
There's not within the Santa Moss plan, but there are design guidelines that would encourage, you know, insetting a second floor from the first floor, kind of like a, we call it a wedding cake sort of design. Just so it's, it's not a box.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just, I just wasn't sure about that. Any other questions for staff, anybody?
Yeah, just a quick one. Have we received any feedback from the neighbors?
No, not, no formal comments. I did receive some questions early on when the courtesy notice went out, but I have not received any comments from any neighbors.
Does that include no stamp memo or letter?
I have not received anything from Stack.
Thank you, yes.
I have a question. Can you confirm objectively what it is that makes the interior ADU classified as an interior ADU? What are the specifications?
It's constructed as part of the new house. So there's an interior, oh, sorry, go ahead.
What would, again, objectively classify it as an ADU as opposed to just an extension or an enlarging of the home itself?
The kitchen, a second cooking area would pretty much make it a, and then there's living area, sleeping area, sanitary facilities. But the food preparation area is really what makes it a separate unit.
Thank you.
Now, so why is it an interior ADU rather than an attached ADU? Is there, are there differences?
Yes. If, if you were to have an existing house and the ADU was constructed as an addition, that would be an attached ADU. And then there's detached ADU, which obviously is a separate structure.
Okay.
An interior ADU, it's all constructed together.
I got you.
And it's within one structure.
Understood, got you.
To ask one more question, our terminology, is this the same thing as a junior ADU?
That, that's a different type of ADU. It's, I believe, limited to 500 square feet.
Okay, so it's both the size and that it's otherwise interior or attached?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? If, if not, then let's open the public hearing. And with the applicant, care to address us?
Yes, my name is Daniel Warren. I'm the applicant and the designer on this project. We are proposing to demo the existing residence and construct a the actual habitable for the main house is 3,200 square feet along with an 800, I think it's 820, almost 22 square foot ADU. And so therefore, we've got the majority of the bedrooms on that second story. But we were able to position those in such a way so all the egress windows are on the front and the rear. So we were able to keep all the windows on the side of the house. You know, so the seals of them were up at five feet to keep privacy to the neighbors. Along with that, you know, we were able to get some pretty good setback on the second story, pushing, pulling those walls in. And again, to the ADU, we did want to incorporate an ADU. But to be able to maximize the backyard space, we went ahead and did the interior or attached ADU. And again, and early on, we were trying to just get something that was compatible with the neighborhood. And I think Nas touched on it early already, but we too had reached out early on to all the neighbors. And so far, haven't heard any negative feedback with the designer or anything. So I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions that anyone may have regarding the designer, anything.
Any questions for Daniel? I've got one, Daniel. So the reason that you didn't do a detached ADU was to maximize the, the size of the yard? Is that what you said?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, just for any potential, you know, whether it was, you know, play space for the kids or a future pool, we were just wanting to keep that yard open.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Are there any other speakers for this item? Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, well, we'll.
My name is Rajah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Hi, Raj. Yeah, sure.
Hey, my name is Rajah. I'm a neighbor from the neighborhood. I live like 10 houses down on Hacienda Avenue. I feel this is a great project. These are all big lots, so none of the FAR or anything is over what is proposed in San Thomas Area Neighborhood Plan. I love that the new, both the new houses that are coming on today's agenda has an ADU. That's wonderful. Fulfills the mission of both the city and the state. Welcome to the neighborhood, guys. A quick thing on the agenda, it says 1361 Peggy Avenue, but the actual address is 1351. So the document, agenda document has something wrong. So someone has to fix that. I know the clear story windows are just like, you know, a discretionary thing or, you know, a suggestion, but I know I'm seeing these days that the planning department is pushing for that a lot. But considering the light and stuff, having clear story windows is not a great thing. So I think we should come with a better idea of having windows instead of a clear story or whatever we call those tiny windows in the top, even for the site, considering the sun angle and stuff. Also, considering a lot of ADUs are getting built and the applications are increasing, I saw a few of the commissioners asking, you know, details of what that means by what this means. I think it will be my suggestion, my is, you know, I think friendly suggestion is to, all the commissioners get educated more on what means an ADU. We have gone through a two-year process, so still getting those kinds of questions is a little, I don't know what to say. Other than that, I feel, you know, the size of the building is not a problem, even though the neighboring buildings are only one floor. But these are new constructions. My house is built in 1920. So are a lot of houses in the neighborhood. You know, we can't keep comparing to something that was built like 200 years ago and saying, hey, you, you know, this, the neighborhood can't become modern or whatever the needs of the current generation of people is. So, yeah, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, there's, oh, Commissioners Zisser here, can you?
I apologize. I lost my Zoom link and my email, couldn't find it. So I guess I'm going to have to abstain on this particular one.
You probably, yeah, okay, all right. But we'll mark you that and we'll note that. And then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And who wants to start us off?
I like this design. I had the chance to go bike out by this place. It's a very quiet neighborhood. And I especially like the idea that, you know, having an ADU on or part of the premises doesn't make it look incredibly different. It integrates well. I'm in favor of this, and I definitely appreciate that the, the owners and the architects are putting an extra unit in.
Anybody else? Yeah, I don't mind chiming in right here because I gave this a good look. And now I agree, the design is, is really nice. The second story, I think, is, is nice. So really, the issue, the only issue I had is the, is the scale and mass. So we come back to the scale and mass. And we want ADUs. And, you know, there's this real subjective language in there about being compatible with the neighborhood and scale and mass. And, and I, you know, I, I don't look at, I honestly don't look at the exact neighboring houses, although a lot of people would. I look at the bigger general area. And fortunately, right across the street, we got a great example of it. We've got a two-story, fairly new house with a, with a nice, modern design. No ADU, but you know, the, the difference between 1351, if that's the correct address, I didn't quite hear what Rajah said, and 1350 in size and scale and mass, it's it's pretty, it's pretty immense. And I think, I do think this is the kind of project that is, you know, so huge, it does change the character and it kind of sets the tone for future development in the area. But it sounds, it seems to me, though, that, you know, that's kind of what we bought into with, with the ADUs that we're going to be pushing and promoting. And I, you know, I, I didn't, couldn't, not that I'm looking for it, but I don't have an objective measure from which, for me to personally, you know, be against the project, but I, I guess I at least want to note that the, that the scale, especially the second floor, the scale is so much bigger than even the big house that was built not too long ago, it looks like, across the street. And the other bigger houses down the block there, not too far. So you know, it, it is one of those projects where, you know, I think people go by and go, you know, some people will go, geez, I, it's great, what a great project. I, I hope I can build my lot like this. And other people go by and say, oh, man, how could they put such a monster house in this nice neighborhood? So I think you're going to get 50/50 on that one. But yeah, I thought the scale and mass was, was a, again, it's subjective, but it just certainly seemed like a order of magnitude bigger than, than we've seen in that neighborhood. That's my two cents.
Yeah.
Chime in?
Yeah, sure. This came up at SARC a couple of weeks ago and, you know, similar comments, nice, nice design.
I should have asked for a stark report and I forgot. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. And the massing came up, scale and massing, because the two houses either side of it, a single story, I believe. But from recollection, when I, when I visited the street, I think it's actually somewhat shielded by the trees there. And I think we asked in SARC about type of preservation of the trees and basically acting as shielding. And I think it's probably less severe than it looks in the naked drawings that we've seen there from memory. So I completely get your concern there because that was a concern for me. But I think in situ, it's probably going to be less of, less of an issue. So that's, so I, I'm supportive of it. And just to Rajah's comments on the ADU, I would just like to note that I think the city has done a great summary sheet, which is on the website, which does a great explanation of the, the latest, the November ordinance change. So I use that as a very good reference sheet to, to understand it without having to wade through all the the details of it, if, if people want to have a look at that.
Like, just toss in that, I agree with Commissioner or Chair Cray that when you look at it on the, on the streetscape, it is clearly much larger than the two neighboring uses. But at the same time, I really do appreciate staff having listed what the other two-story homes in the region are in the area. Because if there's only, if it's the only two-story home, obviously, it absolutely does not fit. What we saw here is that nearby, there are, I believe, 32 nearby, 32 homes within 300 feet of it, and of those, six or two-story. So my, my view of this is that this is not entirely out of place. It's one of about a fifth of the homes are big. And like, this wouldn't completely change the neighborhood. There's a, there's currently a mix of larger and smaller homes there, and there will be a mix of larger and smaller homes after this. So I'm not terribly concerned about that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll go. Looks great, exciting, love the area. We see a lot of these things coming up here where we start to go two stories where everything used to be flat and one story. Their lot seems to be a little bit more deep than it did wide. And so, you know, that definitely adds to the appearance of it being, you know, more massive than the neighboring homes. But again, that's, that's more so just the shape of their lot. Then right next to them, they also have a flag lot as well, too. What an interesting, you know, kind of a long driveway and then two houses on to the right of them. So the way I look at it, it looks great, very exciting, you know, including the new interior ADU, which is going to be fantastic to get more of that in the city. So nothing but good thing to say about this project.
Shall I move to make a?
Sure. Before you do, before you do, I just want to hear from Nas some confirmation on the address because there is a 1361 and a 51. And the packet notes the 51 lot, but then also there was some comment at some point about 61. Just wanted to confirm.
Yes. Address is 1351. The project number is 61. But, yeah, 1351 Peggy Avenue is what we're.
Gotcha. And I looked in your, at your photos from the street view, and that made sense to me. But yeah, thank you. You can continue, Commissioners Ching, sorry.
Thank you. So I moved to adopt a resolution, attachment one, approving a site and architectural review permit to allow the construction of a newly, a new approximately 4,446 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with an interior accessory dwelling unit.
You have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Bookbinder seconded it, Corinne. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Hi.
Mr. Covell?
I.
Commissioner Ching?
Hi.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Hi.
Chair Cray?
Hi. And then. Mr. Will abstain, so.
Commissioner Zisser, are you going to abstain? You're blocked. Your phones, your microphones off, sir.
Yeah, I have to abstain because I came late.
Okay, so that motion passes and congratulations to the applicant and good luck with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And let's move to item number two. On our agenda, which is PLN 2020-33, it's a public here, oh, I should have said the planning commission action is final on number one unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Item number two is a public hearing to consider the application of Luca Devornik for a site and architectural, architectural review permit and tree removal permit, PLN 2020-33, to allow for the construction of a new 3,630 square foot, two-story, single-family residence with a 420 square foot attached garage and the removal of two pine trees on property located at 1327 Burrows Road. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt. And our planner is Stephen Rose. Stephen?
Thinking, good evening, Chair Cray and members of the planning commission. You give me one moment to share my screen here. So this project site is a 14,000 square foot flag lot located on the west side of Burrows Road between Hacienda Avenue and Pollard Road. The property is zoned R110 and located in the Santa Moss area neighborhood. The site is currently undeveloped, having been recently subdivided from this, the front lot, 1325 Burrows Road in the past few years. The applicant's request is just covered is for the approval of a site and architectural review permit to allow for the construction of a 3,630 square foot, two-story single-family residence with a 420 square foot attached garage. And also entails the removal of two pine trees at the back of the property. At the, so kind of going over some architectural details of this project, staff had identified a potential concern with the rear balcony. So at the rear, the applicant originally had proposed a 155 square foot second story balcony, which would be access from the master bedroom. In response to SARC feedback, the applicant had ended up reducing the width of this feature to about 16 feet and placed a five-foot-high privacy wall on each side of the deck. And has also proposed a plant, well, it's not shown on this plan, 11 24-inch box, evergreen trees around the, the rear inside property lines to provide enhanced privacy to neighbors. So again, this is the existing deck, showing it at 33 feet wide. The depth has remained the same, but they, now it's 16, it's about 16 feet wide. And on the walls, although you can't see from this particular angle, it's been filled in, so you can't see across on the sides. So in consideration of the revised balcony design, the planning commission should really be considering tonight whether or not this goes far enough or whether, whether or not this balcony should be removed entirely. And as it stands right now, the draft resolution includes a condition of approval, which would reflect, which would reflect. Which would reflect, which would reflect the, the post-site and architecture review committee. Condition. So it would be showing the reduced deck size. And the addition of all those trees along the back. Now, speaking of trees, at that back left corner of the property, the applicant's request would result in removal of one fourteen-inch and one forty-two-inch pine tree during site grading activities. While pine trees are not typically one of the, it's not, they're not a protected tree species per code. Those are redwood ash. Redwood, oak, cedar and ash. A tree removal permit is required in this particular case because we're removing. Trees that are greater than twelve inches in diameter on an undeveloped lot. So to help us with this particular request. I, I went out to site, but in addition to that, we sent out the city arborist, Bob Sedinsky. And. Review of the trees revealed essentially that the trees have both natural and man-made structural defects. And are also just generally the wrong species for the area. The trees were also noted as having bark beetles and are mature to very mature in age. And as part of his review, we had asked Bob whether or not our city arborist. Whether or not if any preventative measures, anything could be taken to try to preserve these trees, if they were be put on proverbial tree life support, if we were to. Enhance irrigation, if we were to treat the beetles. What material benefit that might add and if that could increase the longevity of the trees. To which you essentially responded that even with such preventative measures. It's unlikely that these trees are going to recover, that they are in a state of decline. And it's unlikely for them to live for a few more years. So for those reasons and in review of these particular trees that are being requested for removal, they do appear to satisfy the required finding. Removal that they're diseased and, and dying. So with that said, and in conclusion, staff is recommending that the applicant, that the planning commission take the following action tonight, which is approve the site and architecture review permit to allow for the construction. Of the new two-story, single-family residence and as well as the removal of the two pine trees. At the back of the property. So this concludes staff's presentation. After fielding any initial questions you may have for staff. I also had noted that our project applicant Luca is in the audience as well as his architect. If you have any questions for him as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
I actually have a question.
Okay, yeah, sure. Go ahead, Commissioners.
So in the, in the, in the resolution, what I noticed is that. Even in, even in the design, within the design and later description. There's an ADU, which is going to be where the trees were. But you don't have it in the, in the initial resolution and description and data of square footage. I'm wondering if that was just left out or it's, if there's a reason for that.
Yeah, so it's a fair question. And I have a little bit of echo. What I'll note is that the ADU is actually not a matter of review by the site, by the planning commission tonight. So accessory drawing units on their own can be approved by merely a building permit, so they're not subject to discretionary review. So unlike the item that we had earlier tonight with Nas, where it was effectively part of the unit and the architecture is all. Part and parcel to the same review process. In this case, the ADU is its own separate entity, it's a separate detached structure. So that can be reviewed on its own merits separately. Though in this particular case, that's, that's what's being proposed, that the ADU would be coming later, the overall site grading activities would take care of removal of the trees. And then the ADU would be a second, a second separate building permit supplemental. So that's the reason something noted in the, in the project.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. The conditions call for, I guess, addition or installation of eleven trees. Is that related to the pine removal or just a part of the, you know, screening of the site?
So there's actually more trees than eleven that have been proposed as part of the project plans. I, I don't have that particular count, I can probably grab them offhand, but. The eleven trees was meant to help remedy the, the privacy impacts being imposed by the proposed, by the revised balcony design. So in response to feedback, which we had heard from the site and architecture review committee. The architect has made a number of changes to the project plans, particularly that balcony, tried to fill in the walls and try to reduce its size. But in addition to that, we had a certain density of trees, I think it's like four or five in the backyard that were originally proposed. And we're upping that to now that we'll have eleven twenty-four-inch box trees, which is meant to. Really help fill in the canopy along that back, so the balcony won't be as much of a concern. So you could consider those trees to be contributing towards the replacement requirement. But, but the, the site will be more than satisfying its replacement requirement, even without those particular trees being added. There's enough trees as part of the landscape plan.
I did read the condition and I'll discuss it with the Commissioners, but it cited podocarpus. And I'll have to research, but I'm not sure if podocarpus would ever replace the, you know, seventy-foot tree that's there now. They're generally smaller in form, so perhaps I'll bring that up, but what, just for clarification, this wasn't a direct replacement. It will do some mitigation, but it wasn't a direct replacement of those trees.
I would say that as far as the city's code is concerned, the removal of those trees would require replacement plannings. This particular project, its landscape plan is. More than exceeding the minimum replacement. Number of trees. So those trees, I mean, so long as you're providing. Twenty-four-inch box, evergreen trees on the property. And all of these trees, by virtue of the approved landscape plan, will be part of the approved plans. They are serving to replace the pine trees which are proposed for removal. So yes, I mean.
Thank you for the detail.
Anybody else? Stephen, I was just going to ask real quick, because I went by, there is some kind of, I know it's a flag lot, but there's some kind of construction going on. Around there. Is that, is that a different site? Is that the neighboring site that's? Got construction going on or is that a different?
Yeah, that's a neighboring site, yes. Yeah, I'm doing the, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, if we have questions for the applicant, we can.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Yeah, thanks, Luca. As far as the site plan shows, you do, I did do a composite site plan. I could actually pull that back up here on the screen, so we're all kind of looking and considering the same thing here. Give me one second. So, yeah, so I had shown this adjoining property, which is under construction. I couldn't provide a fair representation of what that looks, what that looks, what that lot looks like right now. So I'd actually. Stitched together their site plan just so you could see for reference purposes here. This is actually going to be a larger two-story home on that adjoining lots. It's a little bit bigger than, than what's been proposed on. This particular property. It is a. Yeah, so hopefully that helps answer the question.
Yeah, Stephen, while you're there on that, on this screen, where, now the balcony is where, right?
Yeah, so essentially the, the zone here in red now, that was the original width of the balcony, it was thirty-five feet.
Was that smaller?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, also you're seeing here, I'd identified the original trees which were being planted as part of that original landscape plan. So in lieu of these trees, they're proposing a greater density, they're suggesting eleven trees would be in place of this, this. This side and rear area. That's really where we're talking about even more trees being added. I could pull that exhibit as well, if you'd like to request it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Stephen? Before we open the public hearing, then let's, I know the SARC looked at this, so. Commissioner Ching, is there a SARC report?
Yeah, sure. So the SARC basically concentrated on the, the balcony and the, the two. Pine trees to be removed. So, so appreciate the, the applicant and architect changing the balcony there because the. It did appear to be a privacy concern because it looked across the neighbors, swimming pool, I think there's a play area. So, you know, that, that may or may not be sufficient, depending what the, the commissioners think on that. So appreciate the, the applicant changing that. As Stephen said, we, we looked at whether we could preserve the trees with some remedial treatment. It sounds like that isn't really an option. I think Luca, the applicant, also made the offer of putting some large trees in there, a couple of, you know. I think we refer to like ten thousand dollar big trees. Into, into the, into the lot. And type of acknowledgement of what I think Commissioner Rivlin was saying, that the eleven trees are, you know, not the same. Stature as the ones which are going down. So I, I don't know if the applicant is still persuaded to. Put those additional large trees in there or not. But that was, that was an offer, that was really the feedback. But the general house design we liked, didn't have any issues on that. It looked good.
Thank you, Commissioner Ching. So at this point, we'll, we'll open up the, the public hearing, and I know the applicants here and. Wishes to address us, so it's all yours.
Yeah, hi, I guess I'll speak. Yes, it's a ADU, eight hundred square feet, thirty-six hundred square foot house. It's done in kind of a farmhouse style with wood siding, boarding bed over horizontal wood siding. We've got quite a lot of landscaping going in. The house is, this is a pretty long panhandle for a flag lot. It's, the house sits about three hundred feet back from the. From the road. And there are other. Like, there, there is the neighbor that's building a house right next to us, and he has the. He has the same issues that we did. He has a long panhandle, and so we're right next door to each other. Other than that, we, we, you know, met, met the setbacks for the neighbor on the right. And for the second floor. And. We'd be glad to do, I, you know, what. We'd be glad to. Do anything on the landscaping that the. Commission thinks is appropriate. And that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And anybody else like to speak? Yeah, forget.
Hi. Thank you very much for doing this meeting. And as far as the landscaping go, I mean, those two trees. I'm all for landscaping, you know, I, I do, I do a lot, I have a lot of avocado trees, you know, I do a lot of growing, so. Any trees I was going to, in addition to those trees, I was going to buy those. In Gilroy, they have this humongous tree already, like, you know, ten, ten years old, you know, pretty big trees, you know. And I was going to, you know, if you guys have any suggestions, what would go good there is oak or. I don't even know what species you guys prefer, but I, I, I want to put in, in replacement in those two trees, I put two more trees, you know. I mean, not same size, of course, I can't get seventy, but you know, you know, I was looking ten, fifteen grand apiece, I don't mind spending that money, you know, because it's, you know. I, I love the trees, privacy and all this stuff. So. If you guys can make suggestions, what kind of tree we prefer, you know, in replacement of these two, I'm all for it, you know.
Thank you, Luca. That's great to hear.
Anybody else want to speak on this item? It doesn't look like it. Any other speakers? Okay, no other speakers. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And who wants to lead us off?
The staff preferences for work.
Hey, this is Raja. I had my. Hey. Again, two houses, one on my right side and one on my left side came today that was surprising, so I thought I'll hang it on. So again, I walk on Burrows with my kids every day, great sight. There was a time where I thought I'll buy this lot for my parents and it didn't make financial sense for me. So I dropped on it, but I love the property and. I appreciate the architect and the property owner for coming up with such a beautiful house in the neighborhood. Again, allow the fact that they are building an ADU. Considering the balconies, I think balconies should be allowed. These are big houses, all modern houses have balconies. There are privacy concerns, you know, bamboo trees can go like twenty feet or something, they can have like a privacy bamboo wall or something instead of. Oak trees or something, which had a lot of thing. For the pine trees, I used to have a pine tree on my property, it's just a mess. And I have a couple of family members who have houses in the same streets that, that we have came up. All these pine trees somehow are getting these issues with like beetles and termites and stuff, and we are ending up taking those pine trees. I think they have reached their mature age and all these insects are, you know, just pawning on these trees and they're becoming unsafe. For the balcony, I would like to know how we came to the five-feet height that we need a privacy wall, like why five feet, why not three, four feet or six feet, you know? I just didn't understand, but I think we should start encouraging balconies. It just gives a breath of fresh air for the residents, especially with the two floors. Yeah, those were my comments about the property, considering going on to some of the comments again. You know, why is the ADU not there on the property? I think again, I agree with Commissioner Ching, that Daniel has prepared a beautiful document regarding ADUs. I think the city should prepare like an onboarding document for new people onto the commission so that everyone is on the same page. You know, gets more information regarding Bookbinder's comment, Commissioner Bookbinder's comment on the previous one that, oh, this is not. The first house to be two floors on the street. If this was the two-story, first two-story on the street, then maybe we could have some discussion about it. But then, you know, these are new houses which are being built in an area that had hundred-year-old houses. So there is always a first one on the street. So we should always think about the future and not based on a hundred-year-old houses in the neighborhood. So that is my feeling. Also, the previous house was forty-five hundred square feet and there is no way they can fit a. Forty-five hundred square foot house on eighty-five hundred square foot lot, if it is not for two floors. I have a twenty-three hundred square foot lot. And technically, I can build a ten thousand five hundred square feet house on my lot. So I mean, that's going to be a massive one on the property, right? So that's possible. So considering I have a twenty-three thousand square foot lot, so. Going into these discussions of is it too big for the neighborhood, you know, the provisions are there to allow to build it, and we should always look at the future on.
Okay, thank, thank you, Raja. Thanks for that input. Anybody else want to speak? No other speakers, then we'll close the public. Got a question?
No, just, just a quick comment on, on the place on Burrows. I mean, I went by and.
We'll, we'll bring it back. Okay, we'll bring it back to discussion now. Okay, now.
Okay.
Okay.
And you're talking outside, I'm sorry.
Want to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Apologies.
And now your Commissioners.
It's my second meeting. Give me a break, huh? So. I, I, I took a look at the plans and I, I think the house looks nice and because this is a. Back, you know, it's, 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 you know, whatever you call that kind of lot where it's behind another house. As far as the balcony goes, I'm not, I don't have a big, strong opinion about balcony. I, I would encourage the, the owner to. Really do something about planting the trees that will block, block the neighbors. So I, I would strongly encourage doing that because. You know, you can enjoy your balcony, but neighbors don't like you looking out in their yard. So. So I, I think balcony is fine as long as, as long as the privacy for the neighbors is, is handled appropriately. So. It looks like a nice design as far as the house goes and. Right size for the lot and having a separate ADU coming later is a good idea. So. It looks good. It looks good by me. I think, I think the arborist, arborist confirmed that the trees were diseased and, and should be. And could be removed, so I don't have a problem with the tree removal.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to throw in. I can. I can understand why, like, looking at this. It looks like the balconies don't look out over anything in particular. But I can see why we want, why we would want to ensure the privacy of. An, an empty part of the next lot over, because if we don't do that. If somebody wants to redevelop that or put their house there. What's available would be impeded by the existence of this house, and you can't exactly go back and say, hey, you need to plant some trees because this person wants to. You know, put a house there. I am a bit surprised that the applicant wasn't able to get guidance as to what kind of trees we would prefer. Does staff not have preferences on that? Isn't, I suppose, does the city not have preferences on that? I'm just a bit surprised by that. Those are my notes.
I can respond to that particular point real quickly, just in terms of preferred tree species, staff. I mean, we do want to see replacement plannings, which could replace or offset the loss of the, the canopy. So. If you have an evergreen tree species being removed, we generally recommend an evergreen tree species like, like which has been proposed. To be as a replacement. Yeah, if you have a taller. Pine tree, we would recommend taller tree species to Commissioner Rivlin's point, podocarpus might not grow as tall. Or place the canopy to that sufficient extent. So those are. Discussion points which are of merit and might be warranting for the planning commission to consider. In the selection of a specific species, but we don't have a list.
If, if I could jump in, thank you, Stephen, for that. Yeah, if the tree's intended purpose is for screening, then more than likely the selected species should be evergreen. A deciduous tree would now then expose a yard.
I'll win on the project.
On the project itself, I thought the architecture is appropriate and I think the smaller balcony meets both SARC's requirements and we can hear from Commissioner Cheng if it doesn't, but I think it meets the need of a balance of privacy and affording, you know, open air and some space off the second floor. I think the architecture is nice and the flight lot does hide it. So I don't think there's any issue from a, a street view or even the neighbor's view and it looks not but similar in stature to the neighboring unit that appears to be under construction. As far as trees, my personal, I'm not here to pick the tree that owner selects, but my personal replacement favorite would be a coast live oak. Those are evergreen, but has more of a form of a deciduous tree, but those are native and they're beautiful. They do grow quite large. I'm not sure if the lot can sufficiently hold that. I think that'd have to be up to the owner to decide. But I'd like to see one or two different trees selected. The podocarpus are fine. They're very modern and can look nice as a screening element. But if we're going to try to achieve a replacement, I think we should angle more towards an oak or a coast live oak in evergreen form. And so overall, a nice project and I appreciate the applicant's interest in Campbell and it's a popular lot from what some of the public members said. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so similar comments to Commissioner Rivlin here. I think it's nice. Nice development. I, I think reduction in the, the balcony type satisfies the privacy requirements along with the screen, additional screening trees. Again, similar to Commissioner Rivlin, I would just like to take the applicant Luca up on his offer of having a couple of larger trees. Perhaps a coastal live oak, two coastal live oaks put into the, put into the planning into the, into the garden.
If, if I can add one more note to Commissioner Cheng's comment, I don't, I, I did hear the applicant's desire to, you know, invest and I welcome that. I think that's great, but I don't think we need to advocate for a certain dollar amount. You know, obviously trees will have higher value and would obviously would like a, a larger tree. But I necessarily feel we have to advocate for a costly tree, but species and appropriate size, I think. You know, there's no way we'll ever replace that large pine, but it's declining anyway. So just wanted that on the record that I personally am not requiring a ten thousand dollar tree, but you know, something that is appropriate and the oak seems to fit that in my mind, but other commissioners, I think Cheng, you said you liked that as well, but other commissioners that may have other feelings.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree your point. I type of, I like to have a protected tree, a different tree to the screening trees and something that over time will add to the overall canopy. You know, if we want to let that decision be down to the director of communion to, to think of a suitable tree along those lines, I'd be very happy with that. Suitable trees, right? It'd be nice to have two if possible.
Just to interrupt briefly, you appeared to have a question in the chat, Chair Cray. Do we have to open the public hearing or do we work that or what happens here?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. Was it for the A D U from the fence for large being?
So what's?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. So are, do you want to hear from the applicant to determine if they would accept a new condition? Does that? Because you can impose it. You, you don't have to open the public hearing unless you want to hear from the applicant.
I think it relates to the Q and A. There's something on the Q and A. Chair Cray was.
Yeah, this is a, oh, I was looking at chat.
Yeah, that's correct. So Chair Cray, if you'd like to reopen the, the public hearing and entertain more comments from the public, that would be the appropriate process to facilitate that chat question. Otherwise, it remains closed to the commission.
Okay, well, let's just open the public hearing then at this point, since we've got one person here that wants to speak, but I, I don't know if they can. Can they speak to us or do we?
I, I could go ahead and read the question aloud just to facilitate it. So it's a question from Daniel Bayon to everyone, just asking, what is the required setback for the A D U from the fence? And all for large trees being planted along the south fence as well as not along, just along the area on the balcony sides who's providing a commentary that he's supportive of larger trees being proposed. Again, as a staff, I could respond to the first part of that. It's, it's four feet for an A D U to the property line up. Not measured to a fence per se, but to a property line, it's four feet. And that's both along the, the rear and interior side.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Anybody else want to speak or we'll close the public?
If I might suggest that on the on the, the two specimen trees, I would call them large specimen trees. We have a landscaper involved in this as well. So could we work with our landscaper then present something to staff? And depending on whatever your direction is, we, we can work that out with staff and, and as long as you make it part of a condition.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll see what kind of motion we make here, but I, yeah, I think that sounds pretty good. Anybody else want to speak in the public hearing while it's open? Let's wait and see if we get a Q and A here. Okay, we'll close the public hearing again. We'll come back to our discussion. And before we get into the trees, I'll just my quick two cents is that, yeah, the design I think is, is perfectly fine.
This is Raja. I think there is a delay.
Public hearing, Raja. We closed it. Thank you. The design is good. The house looks good. We don't have the scale and mass issues of the earlier item. It's a much bigger lot. And it, but it is a big house. And so to me, the issue, the really, the, the, the issue that I personally focused on was the balcony and I think you know, again, your subjective judgment, yeah, the original balcony was, was definitely, I think, too big. I think you get privacy issues with it. I, I like the way that they reduce that. And Stephen, I, I think I will ask Raj's question about the five feet. Is that just kind of the standard size we have for the, for the privacy on those balconies?
I mean, that was the height which was proposed by the, the project architects. Daryl had proposed five feet. Typically when we're recommending like a like a high window, we recommend five feet as a standard height that you can't see over through it. Again, these are, it's five foot, just being proposed on the side. So I'm not sure exactly what degree of privacy we're really gaining with that, other than being, not being able to look up the left or right.
I think, Stephen, I, I, I think five is a pretty, pretty good size, but yeah, and on the trees, I kind of defer to my tree experts here, but I, I, I think what the architect proposed is fine. We kind of leave it to staff to kind of work it out and for the appropriate tree. Although the coastal live oak certainly sounds like something that I, I personally would support if we wanted to mandate that in our motion, but I think we'll wind up with some pretty decent trees there regardless. So anybody else want to speak on this?
Just like to make a broader remark. Especially because we're seeing two different applications in the same neighborhood that are in some ways pretty similar. And they are different from the majority of houses there currently. My, my, my view of this is that we're seeing sort of how neighborhoods change over time. Now, obviously, if we were to remove and replace every single house in that area with this style of house, it would be a tremendous change. But the state of it is that the older houses tend to be single story, somewhat smaller and don't have A D Us. New houses being constructed there are somewhat larger, two story and tend to have a that's my cat. And tend to have A D Us. And I, I get the sense like I, I, I have a sense that there's a lot of worry about, does this fit into the neighborhood? And I think change is sort of part of how this, this sort of thing happens. I'm, I'm I, I don't think anybody's arguing that we should not allow two story homes there because it's, it fits in the zoning. But we are seeing a process of change and I think this is, this is how that happens. It's going to be gradual and maybe ten years from now, half of the homes will be two story with A D Us and ten years after that, maybe three quarters of them will be. Just my two cents.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Zissar?
Yes, just to Adam's point, actually, I, I many, many, many years ago, I used to live right around the corner on Audrey. It was a starter house. And so I'm, I'm quite familiar with the neighborhood and yeah, I understand, I, you know, I know what the neighborhood would look like forty years ago. So, but, but the, the, that's an area, an area that has very, very large lots and I'm not a I'm not necessarily a big fan of big houses, but, but the fact is, is that those are oversized lots. And especially on certain streets where they, they go extra deep. They're slightly wider and they go very deep. They can be a quarter, close to a quarter acre or more. And, and so there were not, there are awful lot of small houses built on big lots. And so the train is left because it's obvious when you drive through those neighborhood, that neighborhood, whether it's on boroughs or whether it's on Peggy or Audrey or Steinway, the train is left in terms of building bigger houses because the lots are substantial. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not necessarily a fan of, of huge houses, but, but because of the lot sizes there and because there's, there's quite a few that have already been built, it's clear to me that that's the direction that people are going to go in the future. They're going to buy whatever they're going to do. They're going to, they're going to, somebody's going to sell and then somebody's going to buy and put in a bigger house, but the lots for the most part are certainly big enough to handle bigger houses. So, so I, I, I would, you know, normally, you know, there's, there's certain parts of the of the city where the quaintness and the, and the, and the size of the houses. And I live in the downtown Campbell area and, and you want to be careful about the neighborhood being maintained to have a certain look and feel and size of homes, but, but out there, these lots are so large, even when they subdivided. You know, a couple of lots that were huge. Those hats, that's the direction that it's going. And so that's been going on for a decade or more where two story houses have been put into larger lots. So my, my take is, is like, I don't think you can really fight the, fight the change in, in that particular areas. It's the way and, and apparently the, the neighborhood association, the San Thomas Association, which is a very strong neighborhood group, established their you know, established their desires a long time ago, you know, with regard to, you know, keeping the, the sidewalks and not no sidewalks to keep a country look. So I, I, I defer to you know, the fact that those things are already happening and that the, 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 the San Thomas neighborhood is, association is, has blessed in general this direction. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I think you could run the same thing here. If anybody wants to try a, a motion.
Yeah, sure. So a, a question to, to staff, if we want to go forward with the suggestion that Daryl, the architect, came up with, do we need to add that as a condition to the resolution or what would you devise?
So I'm actually in the process of, I've been listening to the comments of the commission tonight. I'm in the process of drafting a revised condition. So we already have a standing condition, which is condition of approval number ten, which speaks to the number, placement and type and species of trees. What would help as staff us to form a recommendation, a recommended condition would just be if we're hearing that we want to have larger trees and I'm hearing that we want to have of a protected species such as oak. It'd be helpful right now, the plans are showing or the proposal is indicating that we'll have eleven of such trees along the rear and side property lines with the intention of max, maximizing privacy to the neighbors. It is deferred to the discretion of the community development directors preference of this exact species. If we want to hear from the commission what that species should be, if it needs to be more specific than a protected tree species, that being redwood, oak, cedar and ash, I'd entertain that. That would help me also just the number and the size. So we could, we could propose large, but how many large? Should we, should we be talking about one or two or three and then say, and then how big is large? Are we saying a forty eight inch box tree replacement, which is a larger box size? So I'm just doubling the twenty four inch box requirement. So that's helpful to know and for us to phrase a condition for your benefit. And then what, once I know that and once we deliberate that maybe a little bit more, I'd be happy to just display it on the screen here, the revised condition language.
Yes, Stephen, if I could dovetail off of what you just mentioned, the condition right now states podocarpus are similar twenty four inch box evergreen trees. And it says eleven. Now, as you know, you can overplant an area, Commissioner, you know, Rivlin, you're completely aware of that. And the trees just kind of form one canopy or you can plant fewer larger trees. And then they'll kind of respect their, their spaces. So it's, it's really kind of what you choose. If, if you want the tree canopy to just kind of blend together, then yeah, more quantity would be advantageous, but if you wanted a little bit thinner, then fewer but larger. So.
Could we, well, you're, you're more of an expert than us, Director Komorian. Perhaps we just specify eleven, two of which are to be larger, larger forty eight inch box of a protected speed, of a protected, protected tree type to your discretion. I don't know how that works with fellow commissioners.
Could you repeat the count, Commissioner Cheng?
A total of eleven, but two of those eleven to be protected trees of a forty eight inch box.
That was the direction I would have also proposed that, you know, the number wasn't the focus, but bringing in two protected and recommending oaks, but we can leave it a little open to the director's discretion. But yes, I agree.
So for clarification, then it's, it's Vice Chair Cheng, is that correct? Are you the Vice Chair?
No, no, just, just a humble.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're up there though. So the other nine trees can be at the property owner's choice.
Yes, and then two down to your choice, but a forty eight inch and protected.
Evergreen.
Evergreen.
And if I, if I may, Director Komorian had raised a good point. I mean, if we are looking at that revised landscape exhibit indicating the eleven, it almost pre, presupposes that you won't have much spacing between the trees. You're trying to kind of maximize those trees and spacing. So if you have a, a larger tree being proposed, say an oak tree, you might need to reduce the total number. So it might be wiser to leave also to the discretion of the director, the exact number, placement of the, the additional tree. So we would specify two larger forty eight inch box oak trees and then additional trees with the intention of maximizing privacy to joining property owners at the discretion of the community development director, something to that effect. And we would, we don't, we don't box ourselves then.
Yeah. I mentioned this seems a bit, a bit confusing in that I was under the impression that you shouldn't use deciduous trees like oak trees for privacy purposes. Was that not mentioned? I am not an expert in tree things.
Well, the, the comment was that the recommendation that we discussed, the coast live oak is an evergreen oak tree. But yes, for privacy purposes, you'd want a more, I guess, vertical form, denser foliage. We're leaving that open to the discretion of the director and the applicant to discuss. But at two of the trees, and they don't have to necessarily be oaks, but they would be of the protected species, which I believe there are five. Rose?
I, well, I mean, of the protected tree species, the number, what I was hearing, the commission just discussed was two, I believe. And if I may, I'll go ahead and share my screen here.
No, no, I was saying there are five.
There's four.
Four species to select from and there are many subspecies of those four.
Yes, this redwood, oak, cedar and ashes are the four protected tree species.
That's many varieties, I should say.
Sub varieties, yeah, of this.
My, my input was going to be that I, I would prefer to leave as much about the specifics of trees up to staff's discretion because at least I for one am not an arborist and today I learned that there is such a thing as evergreen oak trees.
I would second that. Commissioner Cheng, you want to try a motion again?
Yeah, since I was, I've been the troublemaker causing all this. Stephen, were you, were you putting, going to put something up on the screen or do you want me to try something?
Yeah, I can absolutely help entertain a condition. So if I may, we can share my screen here. This is revised version of condition of approval number ten, which is for the mission to consider here. I just have it up open in Word. I just have it up open in Word. So um, I'm I've dropped the reference to the revised exhibit because it's no longer applicable. But it would read, uh, the project plan shall be updated include include at least two large forty-eight inch box evergreen trees of a protected species, redwood, oak, cedar or ash, and additional twenty-four inch box evergreen trees along the side and rear property lines to maximize privacy to neighbors. The number, placement and selection of required trees shall be to the satisfaction of the community development director and shall not include fruit trees or eucalyptus trees. And then uh, existing trees to remain uh, shall be protected by fencing prior to and during grading and construction activities.
Stephen, um, when you say uh, selection, placement, species selection, is that what you meant? The number, placement and species selection?
Uh, correct.
Okay.
We can actually do this in real time. Look at that. So yeah, if if the commission's in agreement with that particular condition, it would be read into the motion. So you'd uh, adopt a site architecture review permits and tree removal permit with the amended condition. And then you'd read aloud on screen or just say as reflected on the screen.
With the amended condition. So I'm just trying to find the uh, the approved. Unless you have, have you got the the resolution? Um, there Stephen, I can't find it. My, I'm trying to juggle zoom in my other screen.
Yeah, I I've I've flipped over to that tab and I'm sure if I'm sharing that particular screen, can you see?
We're seeing, we're seeing the amend, uh, the condition ten.
There you go. I mean, go ahead and stop sharing and I'll jump over to the PDF as well. So are are you, uh, the reason for that? You're just trying to see the the rest of the resolution?
Yes, I'll read that and I'll say per the condition ten as displayed. So I'm trying to juggle off one screen and I've lost my, lost myself in the uh, packet.
Give me one second because mine's uh, lagging here just a little bit. And then this is the uh, the header language at the top of the resolution as it presently reads.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay, so I I'll move to make a resolution um, or the planning commission uh, of the city Campbell approving a site and architectural review permit and tree removal permit. PLN dash twenty twenty dash thirty-three to allow construction on an approximate three thousand six hundred and thirty square foot two-story single-family residence with a four twenty, four hundred and twenty square foot attached garage and a removal of two pines on property located at one three two seven Burrows Road. Uh, with the amended condition ten as per being displayed or have been displayed on the screen by planner Rose.
I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second. Kareem, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Chin?
Aye.
Commissioner Corporal?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivlin?
Aye.
Justice Sir?
Aye.
And Chair Cray?
Aye. So that motion passes unanimously. So congratulations to uh, the property owner and this uh, planning commission action is final unless appealed and writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. And this item is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess we uh, let's just go right into number three here. I don't, unless anybody, anybody really needs a break. Are we ready to go? Should we just roll?
I'm good to go.
Let's go to number three. Item number three on our agenda, PLN twenty eighteen dash one sixty-three, public hearing to consider assist city-initiated zoning code amendment, PLN twenty eighteen dash one six-three to adopt the new chapter twenty-one dot forty-five and amending other section, other sections of the Campbell Municipal Code pertaining to the permitting and regulation of temporary uses on private property. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under CEQA. City Council's tentative meeting date is January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And our project planner is Daniel Fama. Daniel.
Good evening, Commission. Yes, this is a city-initiated zoning code text amendment to adopt a new temporary use permit or a TUP ordinance. The planning commission had previously considered this matter at your meeting in February twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, you provided a recommendation for approval to the city council that the council considered on July second, two thousand nineteen. Uh, at that meeting, the council provided some more specific direction to staff on that ordinance and how it should be revised before being brought back to them. Uh, they directed staff to revise the ordinance to lower fee costs, implement uh, performance standards, uh, considering allowing certain types of temporary uses to occur without a permit. And uh, just generally simplify the entire approach. So staff has revised that ordinance and provided a new draft that is included in your packet. So this ordinance does create a new category of uh, by right temporary uses. So these would be activities that are allowed without any specific city approval. Uh, examples would be uh, grand opening events, uh, Christmas tree lots, uh, social fundraising events, uh, limited parking lot sidewalk sales, the type of activities that really don't have any particular land use impact. Uh, these events, however, would be subject to general standards, uh, generally intended to maintain the uh, public health and safety such as following fire and building codes and A-Day accessibility. Uh, and just to ensure that the city is aware when these events do occur and should the police department receive any concerns or complaints, the ordinance would require these organizations or individuals provide at least forty-eight hour notice to the city prior to engaging in those temporary events. Now, for other events that are not granted by right, uh, the ordinance would require a new permit called a temporary use permit. Uh, this would be for a wide variety types of events such as outdoor music shows, uh, beer and wine walks outside of downtown Campbell, car shows, uh, short-term valet parking programs and anything that requires a single-day APC license. Uh, these types of applications would be reviewed through the existing administrative review process that provides for a ten-day public notice to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet. The decision is rendered by the director and his decision is appealable to the planning commission within uh, ten calendar days. So provides for all the noticing in due process as normal applications. Now, because of that, the ordinance would require that an applicant submit a request for this type of temporary use permit at least ninety days in advance of commencing the event. Now, if the event is a routine event, the director would also have the ability to allow that same event to recur annually on or about the same time period, uh, just so that we don't unnecessarily push people through a redundant approval process. In order to adopt a temporary, a new ordinance, the plant commission must provide a recommendation to the city council finding that the amendment is consistent with the goals, policies and actions of the general plan. And as noted more specifically in your staff report, uh, we did, I've identified several general plan policies and strategies uh, which are applicable here. Generally, the general plan does encourage the city to occasionally review its land uses to ensure that they are in keeping with community expectations. And there are occasions that having this type of tool would be, would have been very advantageous. Uh, for instance, earlier this year Kaiser did ask if they could have one of their drive-through flu shot clinics on Dell Avenue and or Hossian Avenue, rather. Additionally, that was simply something that the city could not accommodate. Um, that would be an example, something we would like to accommodate in the future, however. Additionally, the ordinance must be found that it would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience and general welfare of the city. And of course, the first intent of any ordinance is to protect the public and this ordinance would provide flexibility for activities to occur while providing reasonable expectations and restrictions as necessary. And then lastly, the plant commission must also find that the amendment is consistent with other provisions of the zoning code so that doesn't create any internal conflicts. Uh, this is achieved by modifying some other sections of the municipal code, uh, particularly provisions in title five. Certain activities currently are reviewed through the police department and issued permits uh, by the city council. Uh, those types of approvals, uh, generally uh, carnivals and circuses would now be assumed through the new TUP process. Um, and with that, I will take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
How much does a TUP permit request cost?
Very good question. Give me one moment and let me quickly pull up the city's fee schedule. The uh, city council did adopt a a permit fee uh, ahead of actually adopting the ordinance. One second here.
And um, my follow-up will be, uh, explain the ninety day again or explain the significance of the ninety day requirement. Because I can see some situations where maybe there should be a a way to expedite it if the warrant conditions weren't.
Sure. So the council adopted two fees. So nonprofit organizations that are 501(c) uh, would be assessed a fee of four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. While every other type of organization would be assessed a fee of approximately sixteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so for example, the uh, and I'm not sure the structure of Kaiser, but if Kaiser wanted to run the flu shot um, drive-through, they would be required to pay sixteen hundred dollars and give ninety days notice?
Correct. And the ninety days notice, I mean, necessary simply because a request needs to be run through the interdepartmental review process like any other application. So the application would be concurrently reviewed by the fire department, police department, building departments, planning and our public works departments. And all those departments would provide feedback to the planner and generally we would need to then work with the applicant to revise or address any concerns that have been brought into their application. So to ensure that we have enough time to review that and that we can then grant an approval with sufficient time for the applicant to actually commence the event. Uh, ninety days was the date chosen. Now, should circumstances warrant, an applicant can always request that say um, an approval be granted more quickly, but of course, that's always going to be a case-by-case determination.
Are the fees the same both for the uh, forty-eight hour process and the ninety day process?
No, so the more nominal time.
Oh, you're muted.
Hit my keyboard. Um, the the types of activities are not subject to a permit, uh, have that ninety days does not apply. They simply need to give us forty-eight hours advance notice.
Okay, is there a fee associated with that or just notifying?
Just notify.
Okay, um, and just for context, we currently it looks like we currently special case carnivals, Christmas tree lots and pumpkin lots? Is there any, are there any other uses that we have that are actually allowed, that there's a process for?
Uh, that's really about it. The only other exception is the prune yard. The prune yard's master use permit has a, its own internal temporary use permit provision uh, that applies to the courtyard area, the main plaza, but that's really the only other example in the city.
Would the farmer's market roll into this process?
No, this covers activity on private property, but um, if there was a temporary request for a farmer's market or some sort of open-air market on private property for a defined period of time, this could apply.
And if I'm reading this right, there's a a certain list of by right um, uses that just require forty-eight hours, forty-eight hours of notice and are by right and don't require a fee. And everything else is discretionary and requires a fee in the ninety days?
That's correct. And it actually, this also does provide for kind of a third category of activities that are entirely exempt, that they're not regulated at all. And then the ordinance simply verifies that. So those would be uh, private events, uh, parties within a commercial establishment that is not open to the general public. Uh, fundraising and commercial activities conducted by children such as uh, lemon- lemonade stands and cookie sales as well as any constitutionally protected non-commercial speech such as initiative petition signing voter registration drives.
Yeah, I vaguely recall having that discussion about lemonade stands. So thank you for putting that, even though it's silly putting that in.
Sure.
Any more questions for Daniel?
Um, just real quick, is this, uh, this change, um, is it, it, the new standard, is this a common thing for cities to do?
It is. Many, yeah, many cities do have TUP ordinances on the books.
But in terms of the one where there's not going to be a, a fee and it's only forty-eight hours and it's a temporary, you know, there's no real permit involved?
Uh, that is, that is likely a little less common simply because if you establish a temporary use permit, the idea is to create a permit program, but the council wanted a better balance of regulation and allowance for certain types of activities.
I I'm just wondering if for the one where it's less stringent, whether there's on, on any unintended consequences that the city might foresee.
The, the types of activities that are allowed with our permit are very limited in the scope of things. Uh, intentionally so. We're just really trying to allow just some activities that generally already occur uh, without city approval. In a lot of ways, we're simply recognizing that lots of things happen throughout the city and there's really no need to add an extra layer of regulation to that.
I think another way uh, to answer the question, Commissioners, is there is a unexpected consequence would be not adopting the TUP ordinance. And the city staff basically telling business, no, it it's not permitted because it's not specified. And that's what we've been doing. Um, you know, if the concern is that um, there's, there's, the advance notice may be unknown. So an applicant comes forward, says, hey, we want to do a blood drive. And then staff's like, you know, oh, okay, well, that requires a permit, but it's ninety days. Then what? You know, maybe there, there could be some discretion provided for the director to to waive that. You know, in reality, we probably would. But then we would make, we would, we would note the file, if you will, that the next time they come in, there wouldn't be any excuse because we've informed them that, you know, there's a ninety day period here. The council made it clear, as Daniel correctly stated, that they didn't want this to be a detriment or, you know, a stopper. And and that's not what it is. The, this TUP ordinance is actually a very permissive uh, tool to use to allow uses that would otherwise not be allowed.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, I appreciate that there's the potential for a lot more things to happen in the city. Um, is there, uh, I may have just missed it in reading the draft ordinance, but is there a limited amount of time that a temporary use can last for?
No, so that would be part of the director's decision.
Uh, what about uses that somebody's just notifying for?
Let's see, there, there is some restrictions on depending on the type of activity. So for instance, uh, Christmas tree lots could operate from November first to December twenty-fifth, Halloween, that, sorry, Halloween uh, lots from uh, pumpkin sales, so from September first to October thirty-first. But most of these would be uh, just generally single-day occurrences.
Okay, yeah, I I see that nobody's going to run a permanent blood drive based on this.
Exactly.
And it, you know, there, there could be a no-home church, house, the car show, right? They bring all the Corvettes or Ferraris, you know, it could be a weekend thing. It's it's truly, it's a tool meant to allow really temporarily, you know, permitted type of activities. So we're not, we're not looking for long durations here, a weekend, you know, a day, that type of thing.
Correct. And it, and if someone proposes something where the director simply feels that it is beyond the scope of a TUP, then the recourse would that they would need to apply for conditional use permits. But they could always challenge that interpretation or determination to the planning commission. And then you would need to determine if the use is truly temporary or more permanent in nature and warranting a standard conditional use permit.
Are there other examples of uses that the city has had to turn down? I notes that some were included in the uh, in the staff report. I'm just curious as to what else we've been missing out on.
Well, you know, it's, it's hard to really recall so many examples. Um, I think a lot of it's maybe a certain matter of fairness. That sometimes the people who ask us, they're the ones we have to deny, but the ones we don't know about, they never ask. They don't seek permission and because they don't get caught, they're allowed to do it. So we provide some level of fairness so that we're trying to capture the whole variety of activity that occurs within the city.
Daniel, did you um, did you explain um, the flights? Was it flights? Yeah.
Yeah.
The party they wanted to have in the back?
Yeah, so this actually did start way back uh, two years ago in two thousand eighteen where the plant commission initiated the zoning code amendment. And that was instigated by a request of the uh, the owner of the downtown restaurant Flights. He wanted to have this special party outside in the alley behind the restaurant. He had invited a lot of people. It was in the newspaper. It was going to have a DJ and it was uh, a very big thing. And then they, it came to our attention and he had never asked permission and we didn't really have a mechanism to allow it and. It would have been very disruptive for the city to shut him down and we did find a way to allow it using the police department's ability to issue a single day liquor license. But it was a very challenging way to deal with business. There were a lot of hurt feelings and. If we had a permit process like this on the books, it would have been a lot easier to deal with.
Thank you. That, that really clarifies a lot of things.
I think we have to open up a, a public hearing just very quick. I think it'd be a quick second, right? And this, uh, so. Public hearing is open. Anybody in the public want to speak on this item? Seeing or hearing no speakers, we'll close the public hearing and, and continue our discussion, uh, on the council, on the commission.
I had one other question. Um, but I think I, I kind of know the answer because it's not private property. Uh, block parties. I don't know how common block parties are, but where does this fall with regard to block party?
The block parties actually have their own permit process that's, uh, separate from this because it is public property.
Would, um, a situation where it's a private street, as we've seen in some of the recent, uh, neighborhood proposals, have to go through this, um, process? So for example, the last session, since Robson home had a private street, they want to close that street and have, um, Halloween candy give out or something similar.
That, I think, I mean. The fact that it's a private street and private property really not open to the general public, that would be a reasonable and anticipated use of a private property. Really no difference than you just run a party in your backyard.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just say, I think the thing really makes a lot of sense and I, I really commend my commissioners because, uh. Came up with a lot of good questions on this thing, but, uh, I think it makes a lot of sense the way it's written here and there's, there's discretion, you know, it's a common sense thing, but. It's good to have something on the book, so it's a good thing we're doing it, I think.
Yeah, I, I type a second chair, chair crazy comments and I think it's a very well thought out zoning code amendment. Um, I think it's consistent with the general plan and zoning codes, uh, and should help. Uh, stimulate more community and economic activity. So it's a great idea.
I'd, I'd, um, third that if that's possible. I, I think it's excellent and I like the, um. Ability to appeal if, if it didn't make sense or if the, um. Director, you know, could expedite it, uh, it's possible. So I think it's excellent and hopefully we can get that. That yard to give us a second look. I know it seems to have been built in the time we've had these discussions, but. That would be the perfect amenity to bring people to Campbell, uh, get them on the light rail right to our downtown or, or local area. So thank you for the hard work.
Somebody want to try a motion?
I can. I, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending, oh, reference attachment one. Recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to add a new chapter twenty-one point four five. Temporary use permits and amending various other sections of the Campbell municipal code pertaining to the permitting and regulation of temporary uses on private property.
Second, anybody?
Sure. Was that Commissioners this, sir?
Commissioners, you seconded, yeah. Can we have a roll call, please, Kareem?
Commissioners Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Ching?
Aye.
Commissioner Colville?
Aye.
Mr. Rublin?
Aye.
Commissioner Zisser?
Aye.
Chair Craig?
Aye. Passes unanimously and it goes to the city council tentative will be scheduled, I think, for, what was it, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
And that item's closed.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Daniel. And now we go to the commit, community development director's report and I think we actually have an action item on this.
Yeah, that's where we put it. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair for recognizing that. Um, so as you know, the, the planning commission, you, you've all wanted to. Meet with the city council and, you know, the, the city council, if. As, as I follow it, they have so much on their plate, they, they want to find creative ways to actually meet with all their advisory committees, commissions and boards and they feel this is. The, the mayor feels this is a good opportunity to do that by actually creating this commission collaborative. And what we're doing is, um, each staff liaison is reaching out to their represented body. And asking for them to vote for one person to be part of this collaborative. It doesn't have to be the chair. It doesn't have to be the vice chair. Uh, it can be whoever you want it to be. And then they'll meet periodically. When? I really don't know. I asked that question. But it, it would be ad hoc, so, you know, a standby type of situation. Hopefully, you know, there'd be some consistency and continuity if it works. I think it's a good idea. And then if you like, um, the, the represented commissioner could then, uh, we can agendize in the director's report. Kind of give a debrief to the other commissioners as to what was discussed and, and learned, et cetera. So. Uh, I'll just leave it at that. Do you have any questions, please?
I can't say there, uh, that, uh, Mayor Landry has had a couple of meetings. And I, I, so I guess that you just emailed me because I was the chairman. So there had been a couple of meetings and I think it was a good idea, you know, the, uh. What was it? The civic improvement commission and the youth commission. Found something that they could work together on, you know, stuff like that. So I, I think it's a good idea. I, I guess I. Do we have any, anybody want to volunteer for this?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bookbinder for this.
I'd like to second.
Adam's been a strong advocate for this.
I was going to, you know, volunteer as loudly as I could for this.
I think you've been volunteered.
Uh, Director Kermoyan, what's going to happen is the idea is that this is going to be sort of. A group that is one person from each of these commissions and will all meet with the city council every so often. So.
With, with actually the mayor. So the mayor would be right. And then the mayor, at, at every city council meeting at the end of the agenda, they, they do their committee reports. So this would be one where the mayor, after they meet with the commission collaborative. That then the mayor would report back to the council as, as the commissioner, in, in, in this case, you, congratulations, would report back to the commission.
Okay, and just to, I, I am very excited to do this, but I, I have, you know, my, my wish list. Um, is there a, I suppose we can agendize this for next time or something, but. Do we want to set aside a little bit of time to gather, um, everybody's ideas on what they would like to see brought before, um, brought to the mayor?
Sure, I think it'd be good timing too, because this, this will be, uh, more than likely, I'm guessing, beginning of the year that, uh, a meeting would occur and. That's when I have on my tickler, returning back to you with a discussion of what you want to see moving forward as a work plan. So. Um, we'll have that opportunity.
Okay, um, so can I move to agendized discussion of just what we would like to bring forward? Uh, bring to the mayor at the next one of these meetings?
Sure.
Okay, do we have a second?
First, do we have to finish the nomination of Commissioner Bookbinder?
I think we, let's just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, so I, I just have a question. Um, this is, uh, something that, uh, the mayor is proposing. And. She's not going to be mayor. Uh, after whenever, December, right?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Will it, will it move on? To, to the next mayor?
Well, the, the hope is that it will and then, and the other council members know of this request, so they, there's a certain amount of, of buy-in. With that said, we can't tie the hands, of course, of future council decisions and if they want to disband it, that's, that's up to them, right?
Yeah, that's okay. I, I just was, you know, the, the little history on this is, you know, I used to be with the civic improvement commission for eight years and. There was a, it wasn't a mayor led, it was a city manager led, um, uh. Similarly, where a liaison from each commission, we met with, we met with, uh, I believe it was the city manager at the time. And, uh, it went, it went, it could have been a mayor, but it went for, um. Maybe it was the mayor. It, it went for about, uh, less than a year and then it got like disbanded. So I'm hoping that this thing would be, uh. You know, something that, that could be more permanent because I think, uh, I, I was in, uh, actually the, my representative for the. Civic improvement commission at that time and it was a very good thing. We could talk about what we're each doing and, and discuss some issues and everybody would get more informed. So. And then bring it back to the commission. So I, I, I think it's a great, great thing. I hope it, I hope it moves and keeps, uh. Like, keeps on. So I, big vote for me.
Okay, so we have a motion to, um. To agendize kind of a, uh, issue identification setting, things you want to work on.
Yeah.
Do we have a second? Need a second?
I'll second.
Can we just do a voice vote, I guess?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Okay.
Very good.
That concludes the director's report.
No more director's report. I think our meeting is closed. That's Campbell City Planning Commission for, uh, October twenty-seventh. We are adjourned to our next meeting of November tenth and everybody stay safe.
Thank you.
Aye.
Good night.